Card and order, Village of Hazelcrest, Special Villages Board Meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, Trustee Slayton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brady. Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Moore?
Here.
Trustee Ramsey?
President.
Trustee Reyes?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Slayton?
Here.
President Osberry?
Here.
We have a call. We're gonna have prayer.
Every head bow. The counsel of the Lord shall be precious to us all. We all know that God holds the sum of wisdom and knowledge, and he's the ground of all common sense. Help us and teach us, Lord, to use the gifts of reason, logic, and wisdom that you have given. Make us over until we resemble the children that you want us to be. As David said, "Search me, O God, and know my heart." We pray for increase in the village of Hazelcrest. We pray for increase in patience, increase in love, increase in unity, and most importantly, we pray for increase of mankind. We thank you. Amen.
Any consideration for possible remote?
None.
Correspondence?
Yes. I have a letter addressed to the Honorable Bernard L. Osberry Jr., Mayor, Village of Hazelcrest, from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Chicago, Rahm Emanuel. It says, "Dear Mayor Osberry, as mayors, we can both agree that one of our greatest responsibilities rests in serving some of our youngest residents, our children. And shaping a better future for them and the generations after them means providing the best education we can. So I cannot be more thrilled that after decades of work, and with your help and support, Springfield reached a historic education funding compromise that puts all Illinois students on a path toward equitable education funding. You represent an innovative contingent of mayors across Chicagoland who work timelessly to make this day a reality. And this legislation is truly something to celebrate. It has put our schools on more stable ground, not just for this school year, but for years to come. Families and educators across Illinois can be fully focused on our students and their learning because we started this school year on stronger financial footing. It was your patience and professionalism, your dedication, and your tireless efforts during the uncertainty of the past several years that made the difference for children across Chicagoland. This compromise is not perfect, but it is a good start in giving our students and educators the best start to the school year they deserve. One filled with learning and opportunity. We have much more work to do, but today I join in offering thanks for helping to bolster this important effort. Whether it was in the classroom or the boardroom, as support staff, our spoken fair funding advocates, we thank you for all the ways you have supported our children. Our future is brighter because you never lost sight of what those reforms could do for the future students across the state of Illinois." Sincerely, Rahm Emanuel, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rahm.
Thank you.
Mayor.
That is nice.
Mayor's report.
Okay. On November 3rd, 2017, I attended the meeting with South Suburban Mayors and Managers and ROW Ventures to discuss the development of a Southland Development Authority to assist with economic development in the South suburbs. The Southland Development Authority is a concept and an idea that Cook County is putting together for the Southland to help bring in more economic development to our region. This meeting was a meeting that had individuals from Wisconsin, New Jersey, Pittsburgh, from the School of Public Finance from University of Illinois. And along with I myself and the director from South Suburban Mayors and Managers, we met to discuss how can we bring economic development, based on what they're doing in their communities already, to the Southland. Development Authority is a concept used in many states. We do not have one in the state of Illinois or in the Chicago area. We feel that the Southland is a fertile ground for such an organization. We're looking to fund this through contribution from different organizations and through Cook County, who has actually given us over $300,000 seed money to look at this process. We also received, are going to receive, some monies from another organization that I'm not going to mention right now, but they're going to donate $500,000 to the process. And so we're moving forward because we know the Southland has land, but we also need expertise in order to have us move forward. So it was a phenomenal meeting, and you'll hear more as we move forward with this process. Week of November 14th, I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina. Attended classes on community branding, economic development, public and private partnership. I networked with over 30 different mayors from out the United States, throughout the United States. Great conference to go to, great information, and also provides us with grant information that we actually need in our communities and for the Southland. So it was a great conference. On November 20th, we gave our turkeys here in the Village of Hazelcrest to needy residents. It was a great event. We always love doing that to help our residents who are less fortunate and support them throughout the year, not just Thanksgiving, but it was always great to do it on holidays. So that was a great event. I also attended the recording of a roundtable, "Safety in the Place of Worship," which will be featured on our cable channel soon. The interview provided questions and answers on how to prepare for and provide safety in the places of worship, in our communities of worship. I would like to say and say thanks to Elder Robert Arnold from Look Up and Live Again Church, Pastor Barbara Alexander from River of Life Kingdom Ministries, Pastor Michael Rule from A-GAP Ministries, and Elaine B. Atlanta from St. Anne's Catholic Church, and also our own Hazelcrest Police Chief, Mitchell Davis, participating in the roundtable and the discussions. So look out for that on our cable channels here in Hazelcrest. Many citizens have been asking about the homes that are boarded up on 175th Street and along Kesey Avenue. Someone called me and said, "Brand-new homes, why did they board them up?" But the answer is that we have a developer who has purchased the property from 175th Street all the way back to, was that 177th Street? 177th Street, which is just east of the May Jimison Elementary School. He is demolishing those homes on both sides, and he is a developer, so he has not disclosed what he's going to develop there, but he has something in mind, and he said he would approach the village once the homes are demolished, and he will come and talk with the village. So the answer to the question is, someone has purchased that property, and it is a developer. So when you see them boarding up homes on 175th Street, that's why they're boarded up. They will be demolished. At this time, I have a special presentation to Ms. Donnegan. Give us a round of applause. Come right around. And this comes from the Village of Hazelcrest, all employees, the board, and employees and the staff. And it says, "Donnegan, in appreciation of your service, Village of Hazelcrest, November 27, 2017." And I wanted to say also that, you know, you came in a time when we had a lot of things that we were trying to do, a lot of visions that I wanted to do. We had a great board, and all we needed was somebody to actually make the dreams come true. And so if you look around the Village of Hazelcrest, we have drastically changed, which we understand how to use the dollars that we have, how to move things around in the community to make them great, and you was a great advocate for that, and you actually made it happen. So thank you from the board, from the Village of Hazelcrest, and may God bless you on your future endeavors. Thank you.
You want to say something?
I was going to say, thanks to everyone. I've been here two years, a little over two years, and I've enjoyed being here, and I hope that all of my work not only moved Hazelcrest forward, but will continue to move Hazelcrest forward. We put a lot of good things in the pipeline that is going to make you all prouder than ever, and that will bring jobs to Hazelcrest, not only for the Southland region. So I'm glad that I was here. Unfortunately, I'm leaving, but you all will do well, and I'm always just a phone call away if you have any questions. Thanks for your...
Does she want to say anything?
Yes. It obviously has been a real pleasure working with Donna and a learning experience. I learned things about finances that I didn't know I didn't know. And Donna has been great in terms of moving us forward, as she mentioned, knowing how to use the funding that we have, how to take advantage of TIF opportunities, and getting our budget in order, getting our books in order. She's done a great job, and we're definitely going to miss her. Glad that you came through Hazelcrest. Well, you live in Hazelcrest. And just so everyone knows, you're leaving because you're actually relocating to another state.
Yes.
Yeah, for a better opportunity, which is good for you.
Donna, you're going to be well missed. Thanks a lot for what you brought to Hazelcrest. We will get over it. We will move on. We will be better because of you, what you brought to us. We will watch the dollars, and we just want to thank you for the time that you gave us, the two short years that you gave us. And I will be coming down to check on you. I have family members in Atlanta. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Donna, for your always commitment to Hazelcrest. You came in and worked really hard to get it sound and really fast, you know, and we've been moving really fast the last two years, and you've been a spearhead with that. And we're going to miss you and wish you well, and like you said, we'll hold you to that phone call away, so you keep your phone on. We'll hold you to it. So be a lot with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you for helping us. Thank you for moving us forward. I think we will be much better off now with you. Thank you.
Trustee?
Donna, I really appreciate a lot of the things you've done, and one of the things that you've done has been one of the things I've always talked about, and that is sending us, getting us to go to Las Vegas to the convention there where we can really shop our wares around and let people know about Hazelcrest. So really thank you. I thank you for that, and I thank you for having the vision to lead us in that direction because Hazelcrest right now is standing on the forefront of where we can do a lot of wonderful things because of that and because of some of the other things that you've done. So again, I can't say enough about what you've done and how you've led us in this direction. So thanks a lot, Donna. We're going to miss you.
I want to say thank you. I really appreciate everything that you've done. From the time you come here, you hit the ball rolling, and you wanted to make sure that you led Hazelcrest in the right direction, and we truly are going to miss you, and I'm but we will definitely miss you, you know. We appreciate everything that you've done and all the knowledge that you've shared with myself and everybody else on the board. So with that being said, if you have any knowledge that you want to leave, the money and your finances are phenomenal. We love, we appreciate you, and we are going to miss you.
Yes, Donna, thank you again for everything. You've brought us on the road to recovery when we were down and out and didn't know what our finances really looked like. And you, again, you diddwing everything everyone else said, but thank you for all of the hard work that you've done. I know you've probably worked a lot of extra hours trying to get us on board, especially working with the auditors for the last two years. So thank you very much, and good luck on your new adventure.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll do well there like you've done here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Kelly?
Thank you, Donna. I learned how to do financial statements. She made every penny and dot line up straight, so I do appreciate that. Thank you for being my manager, shopping partner. You will be missed.
Thank you for all your efforts, Donna. I appreciate you.
I guess I can do two things at once.
Yes, you can.
You all may have seen that Chief Cook was here. He had to leave. Chief Cook is the executive over the South Suburban SWAT team. It's called SERC, South Suburban Emergency Response Team, and everybody's talking about Donna's financial prowess, and what she did also is she came in and helped SERC to get their finances in order. And the police chiefs in the South suburbs oversee that SWAT team, and as I said, Chief Cook is the executive over that. But he had to go to a call-out, so he asked me, as one of the members also, to step in to present Donna with just a small token of our appreciation for helping to get SERC financially back on his feet. This is just a plaque from SERC.
Nice. Very nice.
And professionally, I want to thank you for your leadership. Personally, I want to thank you for your friendship. You know, you definitely have made things a lot easier for me and allowed me to do the things that I need to do. And I just thank God for you and bless you in your new position.
Thank you.
I'll hug you. I'll hug you later.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Donna. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I don't know, people probably don't know this, but Donna has been a guy since for me in the fire department in changing a lot of things that used to be into better things.
That's right.
And it says, I don't know, I watch a lot of National Geographic on TV, and one of the things they say on there is, "Heavy is the head of the person who wears the crown." And you wore the crown well, every Hazelcrest. Thank you very much.
Village manager? You're on show right now.
Oh, okay. Actually, no report. And none for legal.
None for legal. You don't have on your computer there?
Need to get back to your agenda?
No, I was, no, I'm good. Something else I needed to read tonight, and I don't have it. We're going to go back to it now. Police?
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, our heads and citizens, a couple things. First of all, I know a lot of you heard about the incident or what could have happened over at Hillcrest today. Just so to make you all aware, I was notified yesterday evening of the post that went online. For those of you who didn't hear, that was a threat to harm students at Hillcrest High School that was put online yesterday. I was contacted by the principal yesterday evening and coordinated with the chief of Country Club Hills. Also, I called the chief for the county sheriffs, Cook County sheriffs. So we all worked together. We had extra patrols there today. We actually had a couple officers posted up in the school inside Hillcrest in addition to having additional patrol units specifically for that. So we made sure that we saturated the area, and we also have some investigative things going on behind the scene to determine where that post originated from. So that's an ongoing thing. Once again, you know, I know I got some text messages from some folks, and I greatly appreciate that, so please don't assume that we already know about it, but we did. We were on top of it and have been all day long, so we'll be continuing to monitor that situation. Secondly, I already sang the praises of Carolyn and Jamie and our guru over here on the camera, and they've done, I'll repeat it once again, they do such a tremendous job. I don't know if you all saw it this past week, but we did a public service announcement where we were talking about safety during the holiday season, and I believe it's on the website also, but it's also on the police department's Facebook page. So if you haven't seen it, please go and take a look at that. But the next thing that they're going to be doing, I cleared it with Carolyn, is that we're going to be starting our Citizens Police Academy on January 10th. It's going to meet every Wednesday from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The details will be posted on the website for the village and also on the police department's Facebook page, but our officers, a couple of our officers, are going to give a public service announcement with the details on what you need to do to apply and all those things. So please watch the cable channel for that. That'll be coming up soon. And then the final thing I have for right now is, board, I gave you all a copy of the final list of applicants and their final rankings. This list is published, it's outside in the case for the public computer. We have five out. We can't say if we finished our process. They were ranked, and we'll be probably going to print this in their background check so that we can fill some vacancies that we have in the police department. We had some folks who need another job and other things, so we're kind of short, and we need to try to get those vacancies filled as soon as possible. That's all I have, sir.
One question. How many of these people will be filling the vacancies?
Right now, we have three vacancies.
Okay, so three people will come out for this list?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One second. I'm going to switch a little bit. We're going to have the Hazelcrest Mustangs come in. Hazelcrest Mustangs football team. I have a resolution for them. And Java, let you talk a little bit about the team and what they did this year.
I'm going to wait for the coaches to come in, because this is one of the coaches. He's been coaching forever, and I stand up. Come on in, y'all. Come on in. Come on.
Come on up, guys.
These young men, I'm letting the coach talk about it, too. They had a wonderful two seasons. They went undefeated two seasons in a row, and y'all face the audience. We proud of y'all. These are some of the players that were able to come today. A lot of them played basketball, and they weren't able to make it to our board meeting tonight, but these young men have been playing together since they were about seven years old. This is the head coach right here who's been around since forever. This is Mike Wayne. And Mike Wayne, I want you to go ahead and tell the next one of this.
I've been around for ages. I hope to be found. This team accomplished something that's unheard of in youth sports. They went 22 and 0 in two years. We had the chance to take this team to Indiana to experience life outside of Will Cook. Like I said, these groups started when they were like six-year-olds, so that's our widgets. I'll be at the varsity. He's in seventh grade, so he'll be back. He's in eighth, he's going to Hillcrest. He's in seventh grade. He's in eighth grade, probably going to Hillcrest. I mean, eighth grade. He's in eighth grade. Antoine Adams, Laurent Hewitt, Jemichael Towns, Keyshawn Williams, and Andrew White.
This came one off of me. I got a resolution I want to read to keep dropping me out. So I got a resolution I want to read for you guys. I gotta put my glasses on so I can see. And I'm proud of you guys. I've been seeing you guys since y'all were little guys out there playing for forever. And I used to coach Sean Corey when he used to play on the Mustangs. Whereas many of our children participate in worthwhile extracurricular activity while living in Hazelcrest, and whereas the Hazelcrest Mustang football team has preserved to become Will Cook Youth Association back-to-back, first-time-in-history champions. Whereas President Wilkes, the coaches, administration, and parents of the Hazelcrest Mustang expect the highest academic expectations for their footballers, and whereas it takes tremendous dedication, hard work, to successfully balance schoolwork, I know athletics, and school activities, and whereas the Hazelcrest Mustang concentrates on the joy, camaraderie, and fun of the game, with all the football team members committed to the team's success, with many members achieving scholarships from various high schools. And whereas the Village of Hazelcrest and the whole community are proud of the 2017 Hazelcrest Mustangs, now therefore be known that I, Bernard L. Osberry Jr., Mayor of the Village of Hazelcrest, do hereby claim Monday, November 27th, as Hazelcrest Mustang Day. A successful young man recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent is witness, therefore, I, this date in hand, calls the Silver Village of Hazelcrest to be affixed on the 27th day of November 2017, and we will get the document to you guys. Thank you so very much. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations, man. Hey, congratulations. Two years in a row.
Congratulations.
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 What you guys come out and pitch with your whole board and the clerk. Come right, right, right behind us here.
Do we stand here? John, y'all.
Get the card, get on.
John, Mary, Java, y'all go down.
Make sure you zero in here.
This one?
Trustee, y'all going to have to get up here.
If I can get close in here, if I can know somebody.
I need some release form for this.
One picture of this, the Chili's.
Thank you.
Let's get the fans around some applause for this. Now, John, how did the Chili's do this year?
The Chili's actually came in second place. They did very well.
Ain't nothin' fake space.
That's great. It's always great to see our youth doing wonderful things in the community. For two years straight.
I'll defeat him.
And we got to make sure we support them not only here, but also financially, because it costs money for those to get those buses and get those kids out there. So hey, if you got any money to donate to the Hazelcrest Mustangs, see Java Rock. Okay, moving right along here. Public Works.
The only thing for Public Works, currently, there is a large sinkhole in Pot Hills in the backyard, right off, I think it's 177. So Public Works has been working very hard, along with Sunset Sewer, to get that resolved.
Thank you. And Special Services.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give the board and the residents an update on some...
Just wanted to give the board and the residents an update on some concerns the citizens had a couple of weeks ago. And on, on the alleys of, between Anthony and Orchard Ridge, it was three lots that were overgrown. As you can see from the before and after pictures, uh, it was taken care of before the holiday, so those projects are finished. Also, on Wednesday the twenty-ninth, the planning zoning commission will hear petition for a special use for a daycare facility at a hundred and seventy-first and Dixie Highway in Suites F, G, and H. Also, uh, code enforcement update, code enforcement officer update. HR director will conduct phone interviews this week to potential candidates. Next week, the HR director and myself will conduct the first round of interviews. And if necessary, during the week of December eleventh, be the second round. And then during the week of, uh, December eighteenth, we anticipate making an offer. And then sometime beginning of the year, we anticipate our new code enforcement officer starting. And that's it, thank you, sir.
Uh, New Resource is not here. Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody, December the eighth, it's uh, Friday, December the eighth, will be holiday tree lighting at the fire station, fire station number two. And as we do every year, we try to make it better. And it's a tough job to make it better when it was as busy one last last year. Come out and see it, enjoy the festivities, Thanksgiving's a couple of days in the rear. And ours is coming up on Christmas time, so let's celebrate like, like we know how to do.
What time?
Six. Six to eight PM. Fire station two hundred and seventy-fifth and uh.
Stone, Stonebridge.
That's it. Community and Business Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, on December first, Friday, the senior commission is having their holiday grump, eleven o'clock AM in the senior room. On December third, we're having a holiday trap and vendors fair, twelve o'clock to five PM, and it's free admission. December fourth, the village will have a flag-raising ceremony to kick off the state's year-long bicentennial celebration. It's gonna be at the village hall at twelve o'clock noon. This is going on all over Un- uh, the state of Illinois, so we're part of the celebration, uh, for one hundred years in Illinois. Two hundred years, okay, bicentennial. And December eighth, like the chief said, we have the tree holiday lighting. And December sixteenth, the Saturday, the Veterans Commission Holiday Dinner, from five to eight PM, at the village hall senior room. That is my report.
Thank you. Economic Development.
Good evening again to each of you.
Good evening.
I want you to know that AP Deli is just one of a few businesses that we have been in contact with. We've had and ha- are in conversations with not only the business owners in Hazelcrest proper, but the um, other businesses throughout the village of Hazelcrest, as well as potential uh, or existing, currently existing entrepreneurs and business owners throughout the United States basi- basically. And so we're in, we're selling them on the fact that Hazelcrest is one of the premier Southland uh, locations that they can move their businesses to, or start up their business, that, businesses or whatever. And the excitement is uh, beginning to, you know, uh, the word is getting out. And so the excitement is being built and relationships are being formed, and re- relationships are being reinstated uh, as a result of the board members that we have here and the directors that we have working on the street. But uh, people are excited, people are excited. We want you to know that AP Deli is just one of a few people that will be coming forward as we move forward, uh, to talk about redevelopment and other opportunities within the village that will not only bring in economic development, but it will also bring in jobs uh, to our community as well. So we want you to know that Hazel, that the Economic Development Department is on the move, and that we are out on the streets, uh, and getting the word out about Hazelcrest.
What do you think for AP, I mean, uh, Anytime Fitness?
Uh, no, I don't have enough data as to when they're opening yet, but uh, we'll have it on our next report. Any other questions?
Okay, uh, we do open, where?
She mentioned AP Deli, um, some of the public works might hear, uh, at the previous meeting, she might wanna give information about what their plan, what their plans are.
Okay, great.
So AP Deli, which is one of the businesses on, owners here in Hazelcrest, I believe that they've been here over fifteen years, here in the village of Hazelcrest. They actually used to have a store on a hundred and eighty-third, but now their district office is uh, in Hazelcrest. It's located at nineteen twenty-five West a hundred and seventieth. Also out of that office, they have their distribution center, or a smaller division of it. And so, um, with that being said, on a hundred and seventieth, uh, in Dixie, which for those of you that, that don't know, it's across the street from the district office for one fifty-two and a half. They're proposing to redevelop that area by putting a sit-down deli-style restaurant there with a sidewalk cafe, uh, as well as incorporate their distribution uh, office as well. And so with that being said, not only will it bring others to the area to uh, not only dine, but they're looking to employ uh, some of our residents. And so we are greatly appreciative for that opportunity to partner with them and to make that happen. But um, they're coming before the board for redevelopment agreement. Uh, if that redevelopment agreement is given, they're saying that they can make that happen within ninety to a hundred and twenty days, is what I heard, um, of, of, you know, that develop, that development agreement being issued. So AP Deli, one of our very own, are coming before us, and we're excited about that as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle.
Okay, can I get a motion, uh, to open public participation for items on the agenda?
I move that we open for uh, public participation for items on the agenda.
Move by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Moore, to open for public participation for items on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to address anything on the agenda, this is the time to do so. Can I get a motion to close public participation?
Move to close public participation by items on the agenda.
Second. Move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Reyes, to close public participation for items on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving forward, pending business, uh, trustee Reyes.
I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It moved by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Grant, to approve the regular meeting minutes of November thirteenth, twenty seventeen. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, there were, there are a number of corrections that need to be made on the um, minutes, uh, which
They have been noted, yes.
They have been noted on, so just with corrections.
Necessary corrections, I'll reread it, okay. I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, with necessary corrections.
Second. Move by, move by trustee Reyes, second by trustee Moore to uh, to approve regular meeting minutes of number thirteen, twenty seventeen, with necessary corrections. Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers.
There is a new total, um, the new total is four hundred and fifty-five thousand, here we go, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. On page thirteen, there is a duplicate payment of five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
What's the new total, four fifty-five?
Nine, four hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee.
I move to approve accounts payable number eighteen dash fourteen, dated November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Then move by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Ramsey, to approve accounts payable number eighteen dash fourteen, dated November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Slate.
Thank you, President. I'm moved to approve the request for proposal for construction management services by Ujama Construction Company.
Second. Then move by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Moore, to approve, uh, request for proposal for construction management services by Ujama Construction. And it's discussion on this item.
You might wanna give a little background.
Uh, as we moving forward to uh, do the new village hall and build the, uh, outbuild the uh, new police station on a hundred eighty-third street, uh, there was committee put together to choose the construction company to provide the services. Two companies have, uh, applied for the, uh, applied to the RFP. After interviewing with our committee, out of that committee, they felt that Ujama Construction Company was the country, company that best fit our needs, uh, for that new development. And so Ujama, uh, is being voted on today. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Grant.
Thank you, President Osberry. Um, I move to postpone indefinitely a motion to approve an amendment to a resolution number ten dash two zero one two for a class eight property tax incentive to a class six B property tax resolution.
Second.
Then move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Slaton, to postpone indefinitely a resolution to number ten dash twenty twelve for a class eight property tax incentive to a class B, six B property, uh, tax resolution. Any discussion on this item? This item was brought before the board, uh, we had a company that wanted to actually change from a class eight to a class six B, due to some of the regulations that was implemented by Cook County, uh, on the class eight. Since that time, Cook County has rescinded the new ordinance that was developed by them. And so at this time, uh, the company has decided to pull, uh, to not go forward with the six B and come back to the board later requesting the class eight, which is back to its normal state. Any other, uh, questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore.
Thank you, President Osberry. And I move, um, let me back to, I'm sorry. I move to approve an ordinance creating a personnel committee.
Second.
Move with trustee Moore, second by trustee Slaton, to approve an ordinance creating a personnel committee. Any discussion on this item? This committee is being put together by the board to deal with, uh, personnel, uh, personnel reviews. Uh, this committee will actually review employees as they come in. Uh, we'll set a committee for new hires, uh, that will, at, at, at the end be hired by the village manager. But this gives the, um, trustees actually a chance to interview individuals coming in. Also helps us set policies, uh, if we want to change policy, set policy on hiring, hiring practices or HR principles. At this time, we'll set a committee together for that, and then we review our hiring practices or HR principles. Uh, at that, this board will also be allowed to bring in outside, uh, suggestions and help as they make the decisions or as we move forward to change policies. So that's why we're developing this, our personnel committee would be consisting of three trustees appointed by the village president with the consent of the board. And then there's more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers. Ram, uh, Ramsey, all these Rs.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor. Move to approve an agreement with GMT Management LLC.
Second. Then move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Reyes, to approve an agreement with GMT Management LLC. Any discussion on this item?
Discussion, I mean, not discussion, but could you give us some, um, information on what this is about?
This is the, uh, company is coming in to buy, uh, village managerial services in the absence of a village manager. There's, there'll be the interim village manager. It's a company that we utilize, uh, when we did not have a village manager before. As we congratulate our village manager, she's leaving, we have to fill that void. And so, uh, this company will come in with an experienced manager with many, many, over twenty years of management experience, to help guide the board on making decisions as we move forward. And that's what this contract is for. Any more discussion on this item?
This is an interim.
Correct.
This is an interim position. The proposal doesn't, okay, it said until the new manager is found.
Correct.
Or appointed.
Alright. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carrying. Can I get a motion open for public participation?
I move that for any items. I move that, uh, we open for public participation for any items for discussion.
I second it. Then move by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Reyes, open for public participation, any item? Uh, this, not really. All in favor?
Aye.
This time you have something to say, you have three minutes, come forward to speak.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Christopher Hucko, I live at the dilapidated, uh, trailer park on Dixie Highway. Uh, thank you for fixing the potholes recently, the city fixed the potholes. And I'd like to thank the city of Hazelcrest on behalf of my stepfather, who sold high-quality sewer equipment for thirty years in the state of Illinois. And I'm sure you purchased stuff from him, cause he's a hard man to say no to. Okay, oh, um, yes, uh, I've taken video of the three blocks of Cherry Creek to, uh, record what the government has done to prevent vehicles and people from falling into the creek. And, uh, I spoke with Elliot there from, uh, inspectorial services, and, uh, it seems to be the, um, Department of Inspection Services wants me to do things that I cannot do. And, uh, as I told you, the owner of the trailer park, Gabriel Crayhill, not only is he an investment banker for Goldman Sachs, and, uh, he lives in a million-dollar home. And, uh, you know, he doesn't wanna pay for anything around there for that concern. And, uh, also, he owns another trailer park in Michigan. And I was told how nice it is, it has a fence, a camping area for, you know, barbecues and stuff like that. I really wasn't too happy to find out, he's got a, a whole nother trailer court, and we can't get anything done there. Everybody's unhappy there, possibly there's several more people going to leave. And I have, uh, I've turned over a copy of this, uh, lease agreement, and, uh, all the rules and stuff like that. And I don't believe, I think the city's really, uh, been like tricked into this thing, just like I was tricked in. Cause if I would've known what I found out very soon after purchasing, I would've never purchased that trailer. But we are treated as nothing more than leasees. But everybody bought their trailer from him. And, um, oh, there's, there's a lady, she actually gets her water from the creek. She dips a bucket and a rope in, into the creek, and she has no gas either. Uh, but she has no water or gas. And, uh, oh, my last thing I'll say, as I was telling you before about, oh, I wanted to say two thi- uh, the, they painted the trailers, and they told me that I should use the same paint. It was recycled paint from Habitat of Humanity that they painted the trailers with. And I don't think that's too cool. Uh, there's lots of code violations, the mailman, all the businesses around know about it. It's eyesore, and, uh, you know, I think it's a shame that he's so rich, but he can't afford to spend some money on his own investment. but he can't afford to spend some money on his own investment. And one other thing, as I told you last time, how unprofessional they are. But they just got themselves a new insurance policy, uh, from somebody.
Thank you so much. We will, uh, check into the owner of that trailer home. Uh, I think he came to us many, many years ago and wanted to put new trailer homes there. So, uh, we will have a conversation with him. And I have to say, I, I did meet him years ago and he did want to put new trailers there and he was not allowed to. So, uh, I understand the history and I understand where you're coming from. I know that people hear you rambling, but in reality, I remember, um, him wanting to come there and actually put in quite a few. He wanted to take all those old ones out and put new ones in and he wasn't allowed to. So, we will reach out to him.
By the previous administration.
By the previous administration, years ago, almost 12 years ago. So, I remember he, he came in and he, he gave him a pretty hard time. So, we will, we, we will reach out to him. Okay, okay. But we'll reach out, we'll reach out to him, all right? We'll reach out to him and deal with it. Okay, can I get a motion to close public participation?
Move to close public participation.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, before we close, I just wanted to elaborate on this weekend's vendor fair. The Craft and Vendor Fair now has about 23 vendors. So, they are eager to see the shoppers. So, this is just my plea to everyone that's working for Hazelcrest, everyone that has an interest in Hazelcrest. Let's make this as big as we can. It's, it's on Sunday from 12 to 5 in the senior room. And we have stuff for men, women, kids, home decor, holiday ornaments. I mean, some of everything that you can name has signed up for the vendor fair. So, please help me spread the word. Help Carolyn, Felice, and Kim. We are doing our best to make it a big event. And I'm confident in all of the vendors now, but I need the support of everyone to get the shoppers. So, can I count on y'all? Okay, thank you.
Sure. A lot of these items made by the vendors or are these items being sold or also made? Both?
And made and some that they just...
Phenomenal, okay. Can I get a motion to close public participation?
Hi, my name is Jamar Rogers. I just wanted to, um, also congratulate Donna Gading. You will be missed. She has not only helped the city, but she has helped, uh, community people outside of, uh, Hazelcrest City's business. And, uh, I just wanted to thank you immensely and good luck to you.
Anyone else? Sure.
Move to close public participation.
The move by Trustee Ramsey to close public participation, second by Trustee Rogers. All in favor?
Aye.
We're closed. Again, I want to first thank, uh, manager Donna Gading for actually, uh, working in Hazelcrest, living in Hazelcrest and actually get us on the right fiscal footing. Uh, I think you're gonna see Hazelcrest begin to zoom after this. Once you have a good foundation, it's easy to build a building. And I think we have a phenomenal foundation. I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the board for actually doing the things we've done and, and, and being open to all the things we've pushed, pushed forward. I want to thank the citizens, because you guys are going to see a transition. And if you have not seen it already in the Village of Hazelcrest, for the things we're trying to make our community proud of. And if you look around your community, from our new community building on the east side of town to the old dilapidated homes that we've gotten rid of and for the many roads that we've repaved over the short time of less than five years. I want to say thank you for understanding and I want you to get ready for the future. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Then move by Trustee Ramsey, second by Trustee Moore. All in favor?
Aye.